...reconvene the regular session meeting. We are now on unfinished business. Next up, we have for discussion and reconsideration of road maintenance agreements for 2019 with NCDOT. I'd like to ask, I know in the audience you may be hearing things that you may not want to hear, you may hear things that you do want to hear, you may disagree, you may agree, but please, to make it easy for us to, you know, we gave its chance to speak, so this is really for council for a discussion, and hopefully we can move this thing forward. I guess I'd like to start on this. I actually wrote a letter to neighbors and friends, but I chose not to send it, but I'm gonna read it to you here, so I'll put it for the record. Because I was a little concerned, and I will tell you, I was surprised on so many levels. So let me just read this letter to you, and maybe to give you guys for, you know, whether you're in the audience, or maybe for a sense of Mick understanding, I know Mick and I talked a little bit about this, and kind of brought him up to speed, but I'll just read the letter to you. It's to neighbors and friends. Recently, in a regular scheduled work session meeting on 3/28/19, where normally council members do not make decisions, but rather just discuss issues.
I can't believe he's gonna do this again.
Excuse me, Mary, I have before you're already starting.
Yes, because we were asked to make a decision. The administrator said we were at the time.
Mary, I have the floor.
And I'm tired of you continuously making something political. No, you don't, actually.
I do have the floor.
You just opened it and started talking, nobody asked for the letter, no one cared necessarily.
Well, I have a right to read it.
So we have a discussion, you should be opening the discussion first with your council, to find out whether or not, visit the item that's actually on the table. Not necessarily your own personal sentiments.
This is about the item that is on the table.
It's not about your personal sentiments, it's about the facts that are in front of us that led to the decision.
It is facts. If you let me read it, you'll find the facts.
And what you said was, and what you said was, that we, where we normally do not make a decision.
She gets mad when you lie.
Because I don't like lies, and it's obvious that you've manipulated a lot of people into believing things that aren't true.
Did I call any of you?
No.
No.
No, don't make assumptions.
I didn't make that assumption, he did. By asking if he called you, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I said you're manipulating, because you're saying that we don't make decisions at a meeting. And we do, number one.
You're out of line.
And number two, we were asked to.
You're out of line, first of all, I have the floor, I am speaking, I run, last time I checked.
Nobody asked you to do that.
The mayor doesn't get a vote, by the way, but I do run the meetings.
No, we're supposed to be discussing whether to reconsider.
And we're about to it. So.
Not run a narrative in an article in a magazine.
No, this isn't in a magazine, I said, I did not send this out.
This is your personal opinion.
But I chose to not send it out, it's the facts, as best as I can get.
Let's stick to personal business.
The only thing I'll say, Joe, is what I think, I'm hearing Mary is upset about it, it was actually on the agenda, consider resolution of intent to assume maintenance of NCDOT roads. This is the agenda from the work session, it was on the agenda.
Which work session, okay.
The one you just said.
Yes, I know, I know.
But you said we don't make decisions.
Right, we made a rule before, if you remember, we made a rule.
Well, why was it on the agenda, we didn't put it on the agenda.
But you guys are making decisions when we're not supposed to be making decisions.
I'm sorry, we're being, yeah, please.
Who put it on the agenda?
I put it on the agenda.
Right.
Why was it necessary?
But, just so we can move on, can we agree that in the future, we're not looking to make decisions, let's not even put it on the agenda for a work session?
And, and.
Because it does say, consider, consider resolution of intent to assume maintenance at NCDOT, but we had a good discussion, and if the audience, listen to the audio, we had a very nice discussion, it wasn't.
There was nothing contentious about it at all.
It wasn't contentious.
No.
Now, Kim voted no FPN, but we had a good discussion.
But let me ask you this, that when we're having that kind of a discussion, don't you want all council members in on this?
But no one said that during the meeting.
But you're saying, but.
Can I interject for a second?
Let me finish. And that's why she's upset, and that's why folks were upset.
Let's just change the message.
There's no reason for everyone to be upset, listen, because in the meeting, this was on there, right? We talked about it, and at no point did you or Kim say, we shouldn't be talking about this, at no point, it's in the audio, and at no point, we made a motion, we voted, at no point did anyone say, hey, Nick's not here. No one said that, okay.
Now, can I ask?
No, but.
But remember I was talking, and then you did.
I did, I'm just trying to.
So we have to turn over you.
Because I just want to get to the point.
We have to stop you, you got a bid, I'm talking over you.
Can we ask the administrator why it was on the agenda, though? We asked her.
Oh, Christina, why?
That's all I want to know.
Yeah, I'm looking back at the March 14th meeting, I believe it was on the regular work session, and it was tabled, if I'm not mistaken, but.
That's right, it was.
Okay.
And you said you needed a decision, correct?
I did.
Okay, so that's why it was on that agenda, is that correct?
Just talk about this, I'll do this.
You can read the letter.
I'll read the letter, but I'll eliminate the first part where it talks about the work session.
You've already read it, it doesn't matter at this point.
I'll read it, if I can do it without being interrupted?
No, actually, I have a right as a council member to say point of information, anytime someone is speaking, so if you continue to issue things that are not truth, or they're half-truth, I will say, I will object.
I'm sure you will.
Yes, you're right, I will.
And then, point of information, what happens? Can you clarify that?
I'll just say point of information, and I'm supposed to be able to.
At point of, at point of information, she can make, you know, make her thing, she has to then, you know, give it to the mayor, the mayor then will accept it or not, and if he doesn't accept it, and she wants to bring it to a vote of the council, then the council will make a decision.
But.
But you can't just keep talking.
Right, but he's in the middle of deliberating, so he's not even supposed to have the gavel in order to make that decision, so it really should be passed to him.
I can hand the gavel, submit.
Okay, thank you, and he will make the determination.
And the whole idea is, yes, you can make the false statement, that's okay, I mean, you can do it out of here, but in here.
Okay, I will get, I will get to the facts.
Okay.
I'll start with this, and because I do see a highlight here, so. In the recent past, road work, road work to be improved within the boundaries of Village Marvin were based on ratings determined by our village engineers, AMT is the name, who have worked with the state, NCDOT, to determine which neighborhoods were slotted to be improved first and turned over to the village. They worked together to create contracts that included using both Powellville funds obtained and provided by the village, we have the Powellville funds, and the state participating with state funding.
Point of information.
Good. Oh, well.
There was an original, there was an original chart that was created between the engineers and the village, at some point, without any understanding as to why, that chart changed to put Firethorn up at the front. Just saying, point of information.
Hi.
No record of that on the council or with the engineers.
Okay, so they worked together to create contracts included using both Powellville funds obtained and provided by the village and the state participating in state funding. Council members have kept at arm's length with the decision-making process.
Point of information, I don't know that to be true.
Well, I have not had.
I'm just saying, I don't know that to be true.
Any conversation, or even a text, phone call, or email, but we, and I don't know what other council members, but, you know, we have kept at arm's length with the decision-making process so that there was no appearance of any special favors being made for any individual neighborhoods, okay? Getting into the road business has been a financial challenge for Marvin. In short, in exchange for village receiving Powellville funds, funding, the state requires us to take over the roads, maintain the roads going forward in perpetuity. This will be a multi-year process before all roads are owned and taken over by the village. Marvin has a very low tax rate of five cents, it would be nice to keep it that way. With such a low rate, we can't afford to have our own roads department, so we rely on our own engineers to guide us through this process. An example would be, last year we tried to do the paving on our own, and put it out the bid with independent contractors. We received zero bids back on the project when we did it that way. The one bid we finally got back was more than double the cost of what our AMT engineers estimated it would be, double the cost. Council determined very quickly that we needed to partner with NCDOT on the process of taking over the roads. This included having our engineers working with them directly. Now, I gotta see what I can read here, because I don't want to be, I don't want it to make this sound like things, but I think this is all very factual. Our engineers and NCDOT agreed upon a work plan months ago with the process noted by all the white markings on the roads. This work was done by NCDOT in preparation for work to be completed this summer, so if you're seeing little markings on your road, that's what it, that's what it is. In the end, no Village of Marvin council member is an expert.
Point of information.
Yes.
I had asked for, so since the day that I came on to this council, I have asked for the charts from 2016, I have asked for whether or not there was any policy with regard to road acceptance, I asked for what exactly the costs were, and who was paying for it, whether it was Powellville or whether it was NCDOT. I have asked for all that information, and I would like for staff to verify that that's true, not that they didn't try hard, they did, but they know, and I know, that it wasn't until I combed through another council member's packets, the day before, found a meeting minutes with reference to a policy which, up until then, nobody on this council said there was, when there was, and I found that policy, our clerk was good enough to say that she would send it to us the next day, which was the day of the meeting, am I right?
Correct.
So I did my very best, right up until that day, to get the information.
And who was the council person?
Me.
Oh, no, the person you were referring to, you had a council person that.
I asked Nick, I got a bucket of, oh, I don't know what you're asking me.
Who provided you with the?
Point of information, it was the mayor.
Oh, didn't, you didn't meet him yet?
I kept an old packet, I keep my old packet.
Yeah, he brought a bin, literally to my house, and said, I might have it in there.
No, it wasn't a secret.
No, I might have it in there, right, he might went wrestling, he said, wait, let me check, and I went through them.
But the important takeaway, and I'm not sure if everyone heard, Mary had been asking for the information, she didn't receive it till the night before.
Right.
So this idea that we've all had this information, one is untrue, the other is, the day of the meeting, we got the document that actually showed where the money was going. Previously, the actual village money, the $388,000.
This reasoning.
Because the previous packets just had subdivision names, which I never contested, I never said a word, it was just four or five subdivisions.
I didn't need it.
But then the day of the meeting, the day of a work session meeting, I get a document that shows $388,000 goes to the 90% roads in Firethorn.
That, right, that are rated 90%, so that everyone understands.
They're rated overnight. Nothing else was questioned, these are all free, I'm happy.
Okay.
But I'm going too far now.
So.
But point of information, I just wanted to talk about the council member thing, I did ask for the information for a long time, and did look for it myself.
Okay. In the end, no one Village of Marvin council member is an expert in the road business, nor should we be directing NCD on how to do their job, but rather working with them and having this process go as smoothly as we can.
Point of information. It's our job, it's our job to look into things and research things and hold everybody and everything accountable, that's what we do.
I didn't say that, I just said you're not an expert in the road business.
No, but I asked for the information.
But, let me finish, okay, that's great, you asked for information, that does not make you an expert in the road business, that's the point of information I'd like to do. Again, I'll say it again, in the end, no one Village of Marvin council member is an expert in the road business, nor should we be directing NCDOT on how to do their job, but rather working with them and having this process go.
Point of information.
I just read it, you said point of information.
It's not their job, we are working with them as contractors, and having them provide a service for the village and its residents, so it's not about whether or not they do their job, it's about whether or not they provide the services, we've contracted to pay them with taxpayer dollars. Go on.
Well, not, not, not all of it, some of it is on their, because we found, we found, as I stated earlier, we found that it was much easier to work with them.
I'm just talking about your letter, you stated it already, I'm just rebutting.
I'm just reminding you, it shouldn't be us telling them how to do their job, when they come into a.
It's a job for us.
When DOT, and I know enough about construction to be dangerous, because I grew up about, and in it all my life, when an organization like the state, DOT, comes in, and to think that they're gonna just come in, set up all the equipment, and do one road, because it has a rating of whatever it is.
Are you reading your letter, Mr. Mayor?
No, but it's, Mary, I'm still speaking.
I know, because that's what I, you said you were doing.
Okay, well, you're still gonna do point of information on me anyways, but either way, they, they come in, and they don't, they don't come in, just do one little road, and then pick up and leave.
No, you're just baffling the conversation, I'm trying to stick to the point.
Well, why don't you just let me finish it, and you can maybe make your point of information on a list of things.
All right.
I think we're having discussions, so discussion is not limited to, you know, a specific thing, we can all discuss and have our own opinions.
You respect the fact that I'm speaking, but I wasn't.
He wanted to read his letter, and if you're reading it in a meeting, and something is wrong, I have the ability to object, that's all.
Okay, I'm gonna read it, the last paragraph one more time, and see if I can get through it, if I have the respect of the council person to actually read this. In the end, no one Village of Marvin council member is an expert in the road business, nor should we be directing NCDOT on how to do their job, but rather working with them and having this process go as smoothly as we can. To pull the plug on these projects that were decided and agreed upon months ago may affect our ability to be trusted partners going forward. At that, I'll bring it open to discussion, my concern is, and I will tell you, you brought a number of people in that said, and put the fist down and said, the mayor can't vote, because we were trying to get, allowing the mayor the vote.
I brought? Point of information.
Okay.
You just said I brought, I don't know who I is.
Well, you brought a bunch of people.
We're getting off topic.
Well, but they, but in the end, Nick, she, they had a bunch of people saying, the bottom line is, I'm not allowed to vote, to be clear, I can't vote on it.
I'm gonna say point of information again, who brought in people?
Can I vote?
No, just be accurate, you're the mayor, speak clearly, who's I?
A bunch of people came in and were siding with me not allowing to vote, so, to be clear.
A bunch of people, council members?
To be clear, they had signs, the mayor, we tried to allow the mayor to vote, I cannot vote, but somehow, I can manipulate things, and all of a sudden, my roads, I will be very, very upfront with you.
Point of information, at no point in the last meeting did I, or Mary, or anyone say you had anything to do with Firethorn, you moved up the list.
No.
She just did a few minutes ago.
No, what I said is, I don't know that, I didn't say you did.
What you guys are doing in here to debate is, is a contrast to the last meeting, the last meeting, we were all very calm.
We didn't say anything about that.
Well, so, so, that's fair, that's fair, so, if I were, as I was trying to understand this, we're going into the road business, and I, trust me, I talked to a lot of towns and mayors and stuff, and their rates are so high, and they have their own road department, we don't have that luxury if we want to keep a five cent rate, but I do remember a few years ago, when this list came out, and maybe we can get some clarification on the original list that came out.
That's right.
Right.
It's attached to the new policy.
And I was approached by John Jones, and he said, you know, I don't understand this, he goes, our roads look like crap, but the roads at Canterfield Creek are getting completed, so, you know, I didn't know John Jones at all at the time, and I, I did what I thought a mayor should do, and I drove Canterfield Creek, and then I drove his road, and I'm like, I did not have an answer for Mr. Jones and his wife, and that's when it got to the AMT, and they decide, for whatever reason, to do things, whether it be.
Point of information, Nick.
I don't think we have to go with that, because I'm not reading that, we're just.
No, it doesn't matter, it could be at any point, you're had discussions, someone's gonna say, ah, read the rules.
What's important is, when you talk about something where folks weren't present, then we go back to the truth, and the truth is, AMT had to prime the pump with somebody, and they determined that Canterfield, Mary wasn't on council, I don't live in Canterfield, none of us voted on.
You're making my point, Nick.
Well, I hope that is your point, because instead, what I heard tonight was, everyone just giving some free airspace. What I was hearing a lot of tonight is these suggestions that Canterfield was done, you know, our finance officer is from Canterfield, I know for a fact, she didn't get involved in that decision, she wouldn't do that, Mary did not get involved in that decision.
I lawfully against it, in fact.
Brian, at the time, wanted an arm assistance from all of us, hold on.
Point of, point of information, though, Ron had a number of meetings with DOT on the roads, and his, his department, I mean, his neighborhood got finished, now, we, they, NCDOT didn't pick that up.
And I provided an email that she didn't.
I agree.
Wayton Chase has been on this since 2016.
I agree, and that's maybe why he pushed for getting in the road.
And, see, this is where your politicking looks.
I'm not politicking here.
We were actually only gonna go, let me finish, we were actually only gonna do two roads in there, do you remember? You were here for that. We were actually gonna do that thing that you said we don't, that DOT won't do, we were gonna go in and do two roads, not the whole subdivision.
Right, that was the plan.
Because when we went into, please don't make me raise my voice, because when we went into Powellville, we said, one, we're not gonna pick the subdivisions, two, we are not guaranteeing any one subdivision that the entire subdivision will get done, just for the sake of an economy of scale, if only two roads need done, and a six-mile subdivision, and it only totals half a mile, guess what, you get half a mile. That's what we were gonna do in Wayton Chase, until, right here, NCDOT teaming, until NCDOT hit us and said, hey, if you'll take over all of Wayton Chase, we will pony up $385,000 to do Wayton Chase. Yes, it happens that a council member lived in that subdivision, well, guess what, we all lived somewhere, but that year, 2017, NCDOT said they would pony up as 400 grand if we would take over the whole subdivision, and we were gonna pay for the two roads which you originally were gonna have to pay for, so I think it cost us 120 grand, which was covered by Powell money. NCDOT came in with almost 400 grand of their own money, and said, let's do the whole thing, and that's the way it's supposed to happen, all right? Now, this list that was presented to me, the day of the meeting, the last work session, there were never numbers on the old stuff, you'll notice Firethorn was never in the road curve, I'm not saying you had anything to do with it, I never did.
I'm, it surprises you why they did it, we had a couple of roads.
This goes, well, let me finish, this goes all the way to 2021, Firethorn's not even on there, I hate the reason, was they were just done five years ago.
When you brought up.
What you said, the subdivision brought them up standard.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean they were done, just so you know.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, so, it all was, was getting them up to their standards, which we paid, the neighborhood paid 160,000, there was no.
But I think that's why their scores are in the 90s, because Firethorn brought them up standard, but please don't let me get off point, the point is, most of Firethorn is on the 90 scale. I too, said in a meeting three, four months ago, that Heritage Oaks, I didn't understand why they weren't at the top of the list, do you remember that, Mr. Jones? I don't expect you to answer that one, I said it in a meeting, it's on audio, I never understood, your wife is sitting next to you, both are sitting there. The thing is, that scale, whether they're a 50, or 60, whatever it is, should dictate the order, until DOT comes in and says, hey, you do this one, we'll do that one, and if you do this, if you take over this one, we'll help you with half of it, here's the problem. On this list that was presented at the work session, these 90-scored roads in Firethorn, there's only two roads that we were, that NCDOT agreed to do, and I think they're both cul-de-sacs, but I'm not sure, I can't even read with these glasses.
One of them was, for sure.
One of them was, there's Seminole, and Honor, that's the only two they agreed to, all the other money, the 388,000, all of it coming out of Marvin's pockets, were going to fix roads that score in the 90s.
At Firethorn.
Only at Firethorn. I don't think they scored in the 90s.
They did, all except those two did, I can show it to you.
That's why Firethorn was never on the list, so that was, well, it's discussion, but I just need to finish this.
No, no, that's fine, I wanna ask a question before me.
Sure. So Firethorn was one issue with the road acceptance policy, for me, okay? And I told you at that meeting, it didn't matter to me, the name of the subdivision, it was the fact that we're supposed to be in a zero-dollar year, where we're not paying.
Point of information on that, and Nick, you can correct the record on that, we just decided that on-off year just a couple of meetings ago, to be clear, the on-off year, we're not in a severe year.
I didn't say it was years ago, if it's on-off year.
No, you just said we're in an off year right now.
Because the decision was made a couple of meetings ago.
This would be done this year, and next year would be the off year.
I'll concede that.
Okay, all right, just make.
I'll concede that, but.
Can I interject, though? It was unclear, though, that was another part of the conversation, and my research, because I am new to this aspect of council business, it's not something the planning board really looked at, except for my one vote, by the way, where I said, I was one of the, I was the only person, except for Carl Barans on the planning board, who said, I don't think that road, taking on roads is a good idea right now, we haven't done enough research, we don't have enough policies in place to make sure that the village is protected, the people are protected, and I have said that regardless of whether Canterfield was on the list or not, that is my position.
And you agree that I had that same position?
Yes, I agree that you did, now.
Because I didn't think we had them on.
But point of information, that's why we had a dozen meetings, or they had hired them to help us go through the process.
Can I, let me, since we're on that, because I wanna get through one subtopic at a time, if we can, I know that's gonna be difficult, but obviously Canterfield became one of the issues, and I would like to just finish that out. To Robert's point, in my research, I also found an email from John Underwood to Lisa Thompson, who was the administrator in 2016, that said, because we're not sure where was Canterfield come from, I wanted to know too, because I didn't want us to be the first subdivision done, I wasn't even in agreement with the whole policy. Lisa, see the attached estimate, Canterfield Creek will be a good candidate for addition and scheduled repair, all associated roads score 71 and above on the PCS survey, we should be able to resurface all streets in this development under the same contract given current road condition. This will not be practical in every case, however, I feel it is a good approach when conditions are appropriate, let me know if you have any questions. My point being there is, I was not sure to what extent that was true, but it does turn out, and I think others have looked at it since then, that the decision to do Canterfield Creek came at the decision, at the behest of the village engineer and the administrator.
So, the point, go ahead.
No, okay.
I just wanna make sure I make my point on that.
So, that pol, thank you, that policy was adopted in September of 16, this email was sent June of 16, so if they want Canterfield done, then that policy should reflect that.
Which policy?
I don't think it was on there because they were.
I think because they already contracted to do it, right? I don't know, I wasn't here.
So, I can give you guys a little.
Let her finish.
Let her finish.
I've got a whole bunch of stuff that I'm trying to remember.
Do you want?
No, no, but it should still be on there, Wayton Chase was on there, Oakbrook was on there, if Canterfield Creek was supposed to be one of the first ones done, then it should be in that policy, okay, I'm just, that's one point.
I agree, I was, I agree with you.
You said, Robert, that we needed to prime the pump with Canterfield Creek, correct?
AMT.
AMT said that, so, or DOT said that, somebody said that, well, I think that's exactly what's happening with this contract, is they're picking all these roads, and in order for them to do all these roads, then they want us to pick up that portion of Firethorn. Now, I wasn't here when everybody went into Powellville, when, because I did not understand how neighborhoods and roads were being picked, one of my first meetings, I asked that question, what I was told, and I said this in the last meeting, was that AMT and DOT pick roads that are really bad, and then they pick roads that are not as bad, now.
Can I speak to that for a second, just because.
No, let me finish my thought, let me finish my thought.
All right, just, let me make sure I follow up.
So, with that, they picked some roads that were good, that they were gonna do, because we were gonna pony up some money, prime the pump and rubber, which I like that. And I think that's what's happening here. I don't want to be the decision maker that picks the roads. I absolutely think that AMT and DOT, they know what they're doing. I'm gonna rely on them. These are the roads that they picked to do this year. I'm fine with doing those roads. With, in terms of Firethorns, which, I mean, I don't live there, so I don't have a dog in the fight there, but there's only a couple of roads that are in the nineties. The rest are in the eighties, seventies, sixties and fifties. The one fifty, they're not even, they weren't even gonna pony up and pay for. So, for me, this seems like, this is, I mean, it's exactly what happened last time. They take them. Now, just because Firethorn wasn't on there, doesn't mean that that's not the right order that it should go in, because I believe that there, you found some email that Ron said, "That list and that policy needs to be readdressed every year to make sure that we're picking, or they're picking the right roads." Because again, I don't wanna pick.
So, the average road in Firethorn, because I did my own assessment, was eighty-one point eight-one, which put them ninth in line.
Okay, but that's...
I'm just saying.
Yes, but that was your, yes, that was your assessment of average.
No, hold on, my assessment of what the rating, engineers' rating was, all I did is take their numbers.
Right.
Because that chart was not organized by average.
But you just said that was your assessment of numbers.
And I'm correcting it, I'm trying to clarify. Is that, when I say my assessment is not the right word, what I'm saying is my reorganization of the chart that the attorneys, engineers gave us. Why? Because what I understood the policy was, was that you all, the council, when I say you all, I mean the council and I don't even care who was, wasn't me, decided they wanted to do subdivisions altogether. So at that point, I was proposing, well, why not just then do, take the average score across all the roads in that subdivision, as opposed to picking a really low score and then doing all these roads and, you know, that are a ninety, like we were doing in Firethorn. And then, and then remember, this is on a cycle. You're gonna have to come back sooner to Firethorn and redo those roads and spend more money that you shouldn't have had to have spent, because you've resurfaced them too early. Now, that's a separate issue from Heritage Oaks and the others. I just wanna clarify that, because I'm sure they wanna know about that. But, I just wanna make sure, and I have one other point that I've asked, if I can readdress. Because I, like you, am on a fact-finding mission, because I wasn't really involved in all of it, so I didn't know where to begin. When I got to this, was trying to figure it all out. The only thing I would say... No, let me finish what I wanted to talk to Kim about. Is that, like you, you were asking, how did they decide? I agree with you, I think there was some sort of a teaming between the village. But that's why I was really looking for this policy, which I finally found that morning, which highlights all the roads and it has NCDOT teaming beside all of them. So it appeared to me that in two thousand and sixteen, they sat down, they took this sheet, right? They said, "Let's plan five years out." And NCDOT committed themselves, I'm sorry y'all can't see this, if it was working, I'd show you. NCDOT was committed to putting in money into this portion. And then Powellville would have paid for the other portion. So that's why I'm saying...
No, and I understand that, I do think that's what happened, but I also think that that's exactly what's happening here. And I think, and I don't wanna speak for AMT or DOT, but if you, if you...
Scroll?
Yeah, thank you. No, no, go back now, I'm sorry. So if you go to two thousand and nineteen, where we're at now...
Oh, two thousand and nineteen.
Like, none of those roads are on there, except for Heritage Oaks. So obviously, things, this is, I feel like this is a fluid document. And even though we did adopt, or Powell adopted a policy, it's obviously, it needs to change, because this is clearly a fluid document, because this is what AMT and DOT gave us.
Okay, so point of information, I don't think you can say it's clearly a fluid document. I think that's one take, because, and I'll just tell you...
I think it's a fluid document.
That's fair, but if I'm looking at a policy that is eight, six pages long, and it details what roads are gonna be done and which ones NCDOT is teaming on, that's pretty explicit for the next five years, I have to ask myself, what happens between this adopted policy, and if you, and if you don't like it, this is the policy that should have been amended? Not just throw new roads out there and say, "Oh, we're gonna spend three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars." Hundred thousand dollars.
I agree with that, but I don't think that we're the ones that said, "Oh, we're gonna throw this policy out the window."
I know that.
Because honestly, nobody knew about it and AMT and DOT were the ones that came up with this. So clearly, there's a breakdown somewhere.
So your boat are getting back to where I was twenty minutes ago. And that is...
Right, we didn't decide.
On the morning of the work session...
I mean, I knew these neighborhoods, but I didn't know numbers.
I didn't know the numbers either, because we weren't given the numbers. So this idea that we've had information, I'd like to finish.
Point of information.
Yeah, no, let me...
All right, go ahead.
This is my, this is my perception of what happened. We did not have all the documentation in advance. It's been said tonight that we've known for months, and that's bullshit. We had not known for months, okay? The morning of the work session meeting, I get this one. Now, I was at a meeting just prior, the regular meeting, and these names were mentioned. Not a problem. I never said a word. But then, the morning of this meeting on the twenty eighth, here's an agenda item. They want us to consider it. She needs a decision. And now, all of a sudden, here's a piece of paper with numbers on it. And the numbers, actually, two issues that day. One was, "Need you to make a decision," boom, here's the numbers. Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand's going to Firethorn. And I don't, you know, they're not even on this list. I thought Firethorn and everyone was in the mix and we were teaming with DOT and somehow, the total number was a reflection of one more subdivision, which is no longer on this list, which was Providence...
Willow Creek and Providence Ridge, which were rated very, very low and should have, by your old policy, be there. But it wasn't there.
I'm getting old, I get lost each...
Sorry.
So there was another subdivision on it. I have a problem with any of them, I never said a word, till I saw this sheet that morning. And this sheet, all of a sudden, it's like, okay, Heritage Oaks, free, do it. Providence Estates, mostly free, do it. Firethorn, some of these roads are in the nineties, why are we spending almost four hundred grand? Point of order.
Go ahead. I just have one question. You said Heritage Oaks, free, do it.
We're gonna get to that.
I haven't got here yet. This is my mental process when I'm seeing the piece of paper.
Okay.
Follow me. It's laid in front of me, I'm looking at, "Free, good. Free, good. Not free, what the hell's going on here?" Right? Hold on, this is...
But that's the point of the question.
I'm not only not talking, I'm talking about something that was in my head as I'm reading the list, so please don't try.
That's okay, no, that's all right. I'm just asking, I was, I was making it sound like that's what happened and it's good and you were good with Heritage Oaks, but then somehow, that got changed.
What changed is a different... I can finish my own sentence. What changed is seeing this document. The ownership of the roads are another issue, which I'll touch on and I know everyone else has a different opinion, but let me get to that. Point of the money is, the day of the meeting, I'm told, ninety roads that score in the eighties and nineties are gonna cost us four hundred grand. That's not what we went into the program for. Canterfield was in the seventies and AMT recommended it, because it was like less than two miles, two point two miles, wherever it was. Firethorn's a big subdivision. Why, why is the village spending four hundred grand on one? We didn't spend four hundred grand on Weddington Chase.
I know, just because they...
DOT spent four hundred grand on Weddington Chase. DOT can go to any...
I agree.
I'm talking.
I agree.
DOT can go to any neighborhood they want and do it for free and I won't stand in their ways. Hell, no. They can go anywhere they want. I don't care.
But so you know, to get to the point, NC DOT, the background is, they wanted to see...
Weddington Chase, first of all, is a top one.
Weddington Chase, they wanted to see that we were committed to doing this. So they were saying, "Okay, what are you guys gonna pony up the first year?"
That's not what we're doing this year.
I know, but what are you...
Your hijack is my conversation, Joe.
What are you committing to? And that's the background, where we, they were, we were committing to the roads and stuff. And they said, that's when they, that's when they came in and said, "Hey, we've been working with our own engineers" and stuff, but for us to come in and...
It's not, it's not, because Weddington Chase...
We were working with the roads and then they raised this, they were gonna give you more of this.